Good evening. The April 28th, 2016 Longview City Council meeting will now come to order. Tonight our invocation and pledge will be led by the Reverend Evan M. Dolee of First Christian Church on North Sixth Street. Before Mr. Dolee comes up, I would like to say that I've known this young man since he was but a wee child. I'm a wonderful Longview family, his brothers, his father, great, great people in our community. So Reverend Dolee, great to have you here. Please lead us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Will you join me in prayer? "You, O God, are the Author and Giver of all life, the Ruler of the universe, and the Creator of all things. You have gathered your people and communities so that they may find a place to call home, a place to work, a place to raise a family, a place formed by the work of your hands. Enable us, despite our varied gifts, talents, responsibilities, and circumstances, to live together as one community in harmony together. Give us the strength of heart to put aside personal convictions and political loyalties so that Longview may be strengthened, revitalized, and transformed into a haven of opportunity, support, reciprocated understanding, and peace. Help us to see past race, socioeconomic status, city districts, and religious affiliation. Remind us that all persons are created in your divine image, and that means something. Strengthen our hearts that we might be empowered to live with honesty, integrity, compassion, mercy, unity, love, and grace. Bind us together that we might live in a community where we place others above ourselves, where differences are celebrated, where injustices give way for justice and truth. May the decisions that are made in this chamber be based not on fear or personal motivations, but for the good of the entire community. May we find inspiration, hope, and courage to complete the tasks that lay ahead. Grant this for the sake of your righteous name. Give success to the work of our hands. Through Jesus the Christ, the Holy One of God, we pray. Amen." Will you join me now in the pledge of allegiance? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you Reverend Dolee. Good to see you, sir.
You too, sir. Thank you, councilman.
Tonight in employee recognition, we're going to be recognizing some Development Services Building Inspection Division. The Development Service Building Inspection Division has received numerous compliments and letters of appreciation recently, thanking the building inspection team for their customer service, permit turnaround time, easy accessibility, and helpful attitudes. The department, under the leadership of building official Mark Savasta, strives to provide the best customer service possible while conducting day-to-day duties. They do this while maintaining high standards for construction in our community for the safety of the citizens. Thank you to each and every team member's contribution. We encourage you to continue providing this high level of customer service. You guys, please come up as I introduce you. Mark Savasta, Dennis Williams, Steve Norton, Mark Hall, and Terry Russell. And Jim Craddock is not here tonight because of illness.
Todd Keyball.
And Todd Keyball. They left one off, but we got you. Here's what I'm going to say about this group of people right here. These are the guys, ladies and gentlemen, that... They take a lot of heat, because let me tell you, everybody who's ever built anything, whether it was a treehouse or a multi-story building, wants it done immediately. You know what? We have to follow procedures and protocols and rules. And you guys are the ones that go out there and make sure that things are put up and they're done safely. And you know what? That's a hard thing to do, because the citizens and the builders and developers want it done way quicker. But it's the attitude that you do it that's making the difference. And you know, my dad always told me, it's you catch more flies with honey. And you guys are catching flies, because you're doing it in a way that even when you have to say no, you're doing it professionally and you're helping. You're not just saying no, you're providing solutions to the problems that they're having, and that's what makes a difference for us in the community. And I appreciate that so much. I know what the builders do. We have seen such a transformation in the last nine or 10 months, and you can see it driving anywhere in town you want to drive, and you'll see what I'm talking about. It's because of what you all do and the way that you do it. And I just want to say thank you for keeping Longview progressive and doing the things that you're doing to keep us growing forward. So thank you to each and every one of you. Let's start the speech real quick. Who's snapping tonight? Come on, Sean, where are you? Keep up the good work, guys. Thank you all. You know, I say this all the time, none of us want the police and the fire job. Nobody wants that job either, I promise you. That's a tough job, and they do a great job at it. So thank you all very, very much. Citizen comment. My first speaker card is Reverend Robert Wilson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
I am Reverend Robert Wilson of St. John Missionary Baptist Church. And I say, Reverend, I am not a politician, but I am a representative of Christ. A few months ago, I was called to work with some of the leaders here in the community due to the uprising of the violence and other methods that we were enduring in the city. And at that time, I was asked to apply whatever methods that I knew. And having worked with young people and gangs and having been a part of the Texas Department of Correction, I... my qualifications were plentiful. A few weeks ago, a community house donated to me and others in South Longview called the Boyd's Community Home. In that home, we have many, many projects to help, I would say, instill discipline, perhaps create and help young people live better lives. We had a garden, which developed, perhaps cultivated mind, body, and soul. The young people were very pleased to work in that garden wholeheartedly, and they yet are doing so. Today, we are in the process of having a chef to come in next Tuesday to share with our young people a culinary art show, free of charge, dinner served, which will gather young people, children, parents, and relatives, or anyone that would like to be on hand. In the meantime, we here in Longview, we have lots of work to do. We are behind time, especially with the community being in the setting that it's in. And it's going to take each and every one of us to work together to bring it up to par. When I say work together, we need to start with our young people to improve their living conditions. We need to develop their talents, skills. As far as leadership training, we are going to have leadership training courses. We will provide services for spirit trips to museums and do everything that we possibly can to ensure that these young people does not fall heir to gangs.
Reverend Wilson, excuse me, your time is up, but we'll give you a few minutes, just a few minutes, just wrap it up if you would, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
As a whole, we need your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My next speaker is Jeremiah Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Willard. Jeremiah Hunter, 314 East Twilight. I'm happy to stand up here for once to... on a positive note, and to say thank you. First of all, Councilman Moore, I wanted to say good job on your first year in your position. Couple of weeks here will be a year, and so thank you for your engagement with me, even though I hope I've done good on what I told you on election night. I didn't vote for you, but I'm still going to work with you, and I'm happy to say you have. Mayor, I also wanted to say good job to you. That may come as a surprise, but I'm... As much as I'm here to stand up and let you guys know as a body that I'm here to hold you accountable and others like me, I'm also willing to say good job when it's warranted. And specifically on the effort that you are making to streamline the public comment period, I think that was a good move on your part, because I agree with you, it actually will or should increase the public's engagement period by saying, hey, keep it short and sweet, we can all, you know, get out of here in a reasonable time. But also with allowing public comments specific to agenda items, I think that's a great move, so good job. Also, especially in light of the fact that there are other government bodies in the state of Texas that are decreasing their public comment periods. Some of us are of the mind that it's because there are local government bodies that don't want to hear from their citizens. Specifically, KDISD recently, a couple of months ago, actually removed their public comment period entirely. And I'm dismayed, as a local government activist, that that didn't get bigger play. I mean, because that's just, I can't imagine. But also, I think it was either one meeting ago or two meetings ago, you said that you are trying to work with the county to move us to a voting system to allow anyone to vote at any polling location. I agree with that. That is a move that is long past due. I was a poll sitter for the primaries back on March 1st, and I saw it. And I was at a pretty busy location, and I saw people all the time coming in, oh, I'm at the wrong place, or oh. And people were getting mad and just going home, rather than exercising their constitutional responsibility to vote. Anyway, so I commend you for that, and I hope that the county... I know the county is making efforts that way. Judge Stout is also in agreement with that. So I just wanted to say from the peanut gallery, please keep moving in that direction. So... But with that said, keep going. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. I believe the very first meeting of this new council a year ago, what was one of the things I stood up and said? I said, I said, I was complaining about the voter turnout. And so, good job on at least trying to move... There's a lot more that can be done, but I'm here to say, good job, keep going.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other speakers that'd like to speak? They haven't filled out a card. Very well, thank you so much. Okay. Tonight we have a presentation. I'd like to read a little something before we do the presentation. This is on the East Texas Giving Day. The East Texas Giving Day will take place on Tuesday, May the 3rd, as a 24-hour day of giving. East Texas Communities Foundations is organizing the event to raise funds for local needs, including many nonprofit in Longview, such as Partners in Prevention, Longview Dog Park, Longview Arboretum, Habitat for Humanity, United Way, and many more. Donations can be made online at www.easttexasgivingday.org or at online giving stations throughout Longview, including a special event at Heritage Plaza in downtown Longview from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., featuring entertainment from the Silver Lining Band and the Dance Studio. Tonight I would like to ask... Lori Weatherford is not here, but I understand Shay Vogel is here and is going to accept, and also Holly Fuller. Please come forward. Okay, this is brought to you by the East Texas Giving Day. May the 3rd, 2016, whereas Longview nonprofit organizations have requested that the mayor, by proclamation, recognize May 3rd, 2016, as the East Texas Giving Day in the city of Longview. Whereas several area nonprofits are registered to participate in a 24-hour online giving opportunity, citizens are encouraged to rally together to support their favorite causes, building a stronger community, and giving to local nonprofits. And I, now therefore Andy Mack, authority vested me as mayor, city of Longview, do hereby proclaim May the 3rd, 2016, as East Texas Giving Day in Longview. Thank you all. You know, it's great to see that we have a coalition that will come together and from more than just one organization. And you're going to be hearing this from me a lot in the future. We all have a lot of great ideas in Longview, and we all do it in our own way. And we need to start doing it together, because together we're much stronger in anything that we do than we are separated and doing things individually. So I applaud you all for coming together as nonprofits to bring together one day where people know what's going to happen, where they can go, what they can do, because I think this is the way to go for a lot of the things that we're trying to accomplish in Longview. I've always been a big fan of everyone pulling in the same direction. And so I thank you all, you all are doing a great job. Please keep it up. Thank you so much. I think we're going to see that this is what happens when groups come together and they organize. And I think we're going to see a huge turnout with this, and I really, really appreciate y'all's efforts. Public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, good evening. I have just a few things to update tonight. First off, I'd like to remind every one of our Spanish-speaking Citizens Police Academy that will be hosting. We're now taking applications. That'll run June 6th through July 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at MODCOB. And for more information, anyone interested can contact Officer Gonzalez at 903-720-6656. We also, last week, finished up our women's safety seminar course that I was talking about. We had an overwhelming response to that course. We had over 50 women that participated in that. We set another course from June 13th to 18th, but that class is currently full. It filled up real quick. So we're hoping to maybe see about scheduling another one in the fall. We had a very good response, and I'd like to thank everybody that participated in that course. I think they left with some very good information on how to better protect themselves. On Saturday, I happened to stop by the range day during a women's safety course out there and watch some of the women at the firing range. And some of them, pretty good shots. If you notice the top right picture there, there's our Miss Noddy down there on the end with the 9mm. I might need her to back me up someday. But all in all, everybody had a good time and good success. And this has become one of our most popular courses that the police department offers, and we couldn't offer it without the support of the community and their participation in it. I'd also like to announce the Giants of Law Enforcement Banquet. This is an annual banquet that we have every year that honors the law enforcement officers of Gregg County. That will be Tuesday, May 17th, at MODCOB Activity Center. The doors will open at 6:00 p.m., and the program starts at 6:45. The tickets are $15 each, and they're available at the police department. They can contact Teresa Row at 237-1100. Not only is this our annual awards banquet recognizing the work of the officers during the course of the last year, but it's also our police memorial service as well, where we honor all those officers in Gregg County's that gave up the ultimate sacrifice protecting their community. So again, that'll be Tuesday, May 17th, at MODCOB. And outside of that, just been busy this past week with the recent arrests from our double homicide in March. And we're continuing. We still have a lot of work to do in that investigation, and that is moving forward.
Chief, we're proud of all that you've done, and thank you for engaging us and engaging the citizens, because I know that this arrest came from the tip, and that shows that our confidence is coming back, and we need that. And we appreciate the efforts that both you and the citizens are putting forth to keep Longview a safer place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief Steelman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard. Thanks for the opportunity to get up and highlight a few of the things that's been going on in the fire department since we last met. One of the programs, I'd like to introduce you to, if you weren't aware, is for several years now, our fire department has hosted an Explorer post. Now, the Explorers is kind of a spin-off of scouting, and it's part of a learning-for-life process. So we actually have nine Explorers, and the reason I wanted to show you this is Saturday, this Explorer group will be traveling over to Dallas to compete in the statewide firefighter games. And we want to wish them the best of luck, and I want to give their names just a quick shout-out. So we have Alexis, Ben, Grace, Hunter, Joe, John, Levi, Mason, and Sabion, who will be going over to Dallas to represent the city of Longview and the Longview Fire Department in these games. And they have a history of bringing back some awards and medals and trophies, so we expect nothing less. And I'm certainly, certainly, certainly proud of them. And I'm sure everyone's seen in the news, local news, national news, the state of Texas just can't catch a break. And here's some of the recent flooding in Houston. And the reason I'm showing you this is we actually had eight members of our department that deployed as part of the Texas Task Force 1 to go down to Houston and help with the rescue efforts that they needed down there. I want to give those guys a quick shout-out. So I'm talking about Tommy Daniel, Steve Dankers, Tim Clayton, Chris McGinnis, Shane Russ, Josh Tanner, Jason Valerie, and Brian Vickery. Went down, and they very well represented the city. And I didn't know if you could see that, but those were roofs of cars in that parking lot of the apartment complex. And there's some stats that just the impact that the Task Force 1 members had on the situation that was down there. They were down there for several days. There's a lot of work, and there's still a lot of work out in front of mitigating and recovering from that event. This is a pretty cool thing I wanted to brag about. The Tyler Fire Department reached out to us a while back and got us involved with a program that they've participated in for several years now, about donating loose equipment, expired equipment, decommissioned equipment to fire departments in Guatemala. And we were certainly proud to get on board with that, and you can see they're holding some of our stuff there in their hands. We sent them a box full of decommissioned gloves, firefighter gloves, and flashlights. And it's like Christmas Day, because they don't... otherwise, they don't have it. So we were certainly proud that Tyler reached out to us and were able to share in that and help out someone thousands of miles away even. And I just wanted to get the word out that we started our annual fire hydrant maintenance process. So this is where we go around the city. We put our hands on every fire hydrant that is maintained by the city. So that's 3,680 of them. And we'll flow water through them and test them to make sure that everything's functional, there's no valves closed, that the stems operate, that they're lubricated and everything, and they're ready to go in the case of a fire. And there's 193 private hydrants that are identified in the city. And so I wanted to use this as an opportunity to inform the people that own those private fire hydrants that it is their responsibility to maintain those. We don't do that part of the maintenance for those fire hydrants. But we do check it through the inspection process to make sure that every year those do get maintenance. So it's pretty important, because in the midst of a fire, that's we're going to depend that that thing is operational. We're going to hook up to it and hope for the best, that we're going to get enough water flow out of it to control the fire. And I just wanted to give one last shout-out. If you're unaware, Captain Steve Warham retired from our department this... earlier this week with 22 and a half years of service. Steve was a great leader in our department. He mentored a lot of our up-and-coming members. And we're certainly proud that he's reached his pinnacle in his career, and we wish him the best of luck. And that's all for me, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, we're at the consent agenda. Are there any items that council like to take off for separate discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Send in the passes. Okay, next, we're to the action item, but this action item will have to be postponed because we did not get the contract completed yesterday at the LEDCO meeting. And it will be put on the LEDCO budget, LEDCO meeting in May, and it will come back to us at our meeting in May as well. So this will be just put off until we get the logistics of that contract worked out. Next thing will be a budget item. Mr. Willard.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm going to move down here and kind of like we do during our budget present... regular budget presentations. But before we get to the slides that I have prepared for you, I want to make a few comments about some things of the current budget that we're in right now and kind of where we're headed. But our 2015-2016 budget that was adopted in October, and we are now a little bit more than halfway into the budget year. And not only that, but at the same time, we're getting ready in May and June and July to really be hot and heavy with a lot of work preparing the next budget for you to consider for next year. So, you know, in our current budget year, it's no secret, or any breaking news, that we are in a very tough economy. We've had 14 straight months of declining sales tax revenue. And so tonight, I want to present to you where we are right now and the measures that we've taken to offset these declining revenues. Our goal, of course, is to have enough budget cuts in this year's budget that was approved to come out at the end of September to where we do not spend any more than what our revenues are. So that's what we've been working on really all year. And we're just kind of now to the place where we really feel like we have a pretty good handle on the revenue, sales tax revenues, and other things for the rest of the year where we'll end up. And I want to also, after we talk about where we are for this year and how we're going to hopefully end up at the end of September, also want to spend just a few minutes to talk to you about the challenge that we're going to have in next year's budget. And, you know, it's... Tonight, you'll see, it's not my intention to be negative or to give the impression that the city of Longview is going broke or in, you know, financial peril. And I don't want to portray that, and that is not the case. Our underlying financials are very strong. We have... Our bond rating is strong. We have good, solid reserves, and so we are not in financial peril. We do, however, have a cash flow problem this year due to these declining revenues. So just like many businesses in Longview right now and all across the state and other cities are experiencing, we're no different than that, and we just have to adjust our expenses to meet our revenues. But please understand, and I want the public to be assured, that we are not in financial jeopardy. So I don't want to portray that, you know, the sky's falling and to be just totally negative. But I do want to... I feel like it's my responsibility to give you my best estimate on where we are and that we don't have any surprises when I come and present a budget to you next July. I also want to say that these numbers I'm going to present to you tonight, really, I think, represent a worst-case scenario. There, you know, we really don't know a lot... I mean, these things could change between now and the end of the year on the revenues in somewhat, and I'll show you that in a minute. And then next year, we... It's going to be July before we have a firm number, certified number on our property values. So, you know, we're... There's still a lot of moving parts, and a lot of things can change between now and then. But what I'm going to show you for this year and for next year, I think that is our absolute worst-case look if everything came out to that be. So I hope that's not the case, but we'll just all be aware of that. And also, I want to, you know, and this is kind of my final little thing before we get into the slides, but I spent 15 years of my career in the private sector, in the oil and gas industry. And I've spent 27 years, I guess, in municipal and county government. And I know there's a perception in the public, and sometimes rightfully so, and... But most of the times not, that city employees are... don't really understand... They just spend other people's money, or they spend... It's just tax money, and they really don't know where it comes from or really care as long as they do that. And it's easy to spend other people's money, and that's the perception among some people. But I want to assure you that the group of employees, the directors, the two chiefs, the administrators, all the employees care about the taxpayer. They understand the severity that we're in right now. employees care about the taxpayer. They understand the severity that we're in right now. And everyone of them want to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I'm not saying we're perfect in that we, you know, there's not places that we are not good stewards. But for the most part, I'm very proud of the directors and the chiefs and the employees we have. And they care about where we are. They care about people in our community that are losing their jobs in our industries. And so, anyway, I just wanted to take that opportunity to, you know, to let everybody know that. Okay. I want to start out, and this is a little recap. In October, when you approve the budget, this is the total city budget that was approved. And it's a total of $160,887,483. And I've highlighted the general fund. And of course, I'm not going to try to pretend to give a lecture on fund account, governmental fund accounting, but, because I don't understand all of it myself. But I want us to focus on the general fund, and that's the number, the $66,459. And I want people, why we want to do that, I want people in the public and everybody to understand that, you know, we're down, if we're down $4 or $5 million, why can't, why is it such a big deal out of $160 million budget to find $4, $5, $6, $8 million to cut? And if we were talking about making those cuts spread out over $160 million, yeah, I mean, we could find a lot more than that. But any cuts that you make in those other areas does not help at all that general fund number. Now, that doesn't mean we might not need to make some cuts in other areas. But what we have to focus on is that general fund and that these other funds, like the enterprise fund, those are your water sewer, your rate-based funds that are based on a cost of service, the rate, we set the rate based on that service. So, that is completely separate in the general fund. So, in the water and sewer, if you say laid off an employee over there to try to help all the economics, it might, but it has no effect on what we're trying to have to do in that general fund. So, when you, we understand, and I think you'll see it in a few minutes, when you cut $5 or $6 million out of the 66, then it becomes a little bit more significant and more difficult as you'll, as you'll see as we go forward. So, but anyway, that's the adopted total budget that we started with. And on the general fund, this, you know, recaps, if we're going to focus on that number, you'll see the revenue, we projected $64,633,838. And our expenditures were $66 million. And you allowed us to cover that gap between revenue and expenses with our fund balance of $1,825,917. And our idea, I think, was sound and our reasoning was sound to do that. We did that as a one-time measure, hoping that our economy would rebound and get us through this year. And we had, we felt plenty of fund balance to do that as a rainy day fund. And as we are sitting here six months later, it didn't happen. Our economy did not recover and it's continued to slide. So, but I think, still, I think it was the prudent thing to do with that. Then also, I wanted to remind you that we did a budget amendment, you know, several months ago. And we used that fund balance and appropriated that to pay off some debt on equipment, looking forward to next year's budget. And I still believe that it's prudent. And anytime you can pay off debt and still do that, that's the wise thing to do. And I appreciate your willingness to do that. So, anyway, so today, with that budget, we believe that would leave nearly a 13.5% fund balance, which is about a little over $2 million above the 10% area. Okay? So, on the general fund revenue, that $64 million that we had projected of revenue, this again shows where we were projecting that it came from. And you'll notice that between sales tax and property taxes, that is 67% of our revenue stream for the general fund. So, when sales tax declines, and that's 34% of your revenue, that's a significant, when that drops, that is a significant hit to that general fund. Property taxes, the same way, those make up the largest portion. Now, these other revenues, you know, we, not all of those, some of those areas, we've seen a reduction in revenues as well, and franchise taxes and certain other things in there as well. But the property taxes, that's pretty stable. Once the value is set and you levy your rate against it, we pretty well know. But the most volatile part of that is, of course, the sales tax. So, when you're looking at that 34% that you're dependent upon, when it drops, it makes it even more significant. And this is just a graphical chart to show you where we think we're going to end up at the end of this budget year. Now, we started 2015, this new budget that we're in right now, we projected that we would bring in $21,744,025. And based on our history and kind of looking forward and some trend lines, we believe we're going to end the year up in September with $19,522 worth of sales tax. Now, that is a drop by the end of the year, over the year of $2,222,025. Now, we've based that on a 5% reduction each month in sales tax for the rest of the year. And to show you how that could change, I think that's the worst case to end up. And I think, hopefully, maybe we're bottoming out a bit. The last month, we collected just 2%, we were 2% down. So, we made a little, a little ground there as opposed to being 5% down. So, if we can, you know, it's kind of hard to be happy about a 2% reduction. But when you compare it to the 5%, we, you know, hopefully move in the right direction. So, we're projecting that that's what our sales tax revenue will be when we get to the end of the year. Now, this graph is a little bit busy, but the thing I really want you to see, these are sales tax collections. The, you see the volatility in those from 2009 to 2016. And you see the yellow line, which is what we call a 12-month rolling average. So, that is the trend line that you, we can use to project how these revenues are going to trend, not only from the past, but hopefully in the future. And you see, in March 2015, you see what the trend did and kind of where it's been and where it really started going down. And as I said, we've had 14 months of declining revenues. Now, the very end is kind of where we are now. And maybe I just want to see it, but it's kind of like when I was a kid, my dad would take me deer hunting and I'd sit on a stand. And I wanted to see a deer so bad that something would move and I would think it was a deer and it wasn't. So, I'm looking at that very end line and I'm wanting to see it flatten this way and not that way. And I kind of think it does, but we don't know for sure. But hopefully it'll, it will flatten out and start moving the other way. Okay, on the expenditure side, as you can see, this is what we projected. And 62% of our general fund is for public safety. And let me just say here, in the challenges that we have, the reductions we have, and what we have going forward, I want to assure you, I want to assure the public that we are not going to jeopardize what the work and the gains that we've made in the public safety area. And we're going to make sure we've got enough resources for fire and police to continue to do the good job that they had. So, I want, and the chiefs know this, that, you know, that we can't undo the gains that we've made and do that. So, that is what we are supposed to do. But that's going to be very challenging because of that. And we'll see that more in a minute. So, and then you see the other things that we fund out of the general fund. Okay? So, where we are and what all this means is, on the left is the budget that we operated under. And that shows what we projected and then the budget amendment and where we ended up. And for us to end the year up with those revenue reductions and us not spend any more than the 1.825 fund balance that you've allowed us to spend, we feel like our revenues were, are going to be down $2,543,381 by the time we end the year. Now, that's a net reduction. And our sales tax is 2.2. We've had some other small one-time revenues that we didn't expect. And then, we've had some other general fund revenues that are down as well. So, that's a net number that, that we feel like we're going to end the year up. So, in order for us to meet that commitment, we can only spend $63,916,374. So, we've got to cut $2.5 million out of this current budget to meet that goal by the end of September and not spend any more than what you allowed us to spend. So, that's really the challenge that we've been working on, the directors, the chiefs, and the other administrative team to find that money. So, this is just kind of a snapshot of what we've come up with. And this is a collaborative effort between all the directors and the chiefs and many others. So, we have found a total of $2,996,110 that we have available to cut to get us to that point. Now, I think we're only going to need $2.5 million. And we're going to have to monitor it and adjust it as we go forward by the end of the year. And hopefully, we won't have to cut ever that much, but, and if we have a little movement. But that's what we've identified. And you can kind of go through there. And a couple of them, I want to point out to you that, you know, that, that I think are, I want to talk about a little bit. One of them is the streets. And you'll see, we've, we've cut $624,000 plus out of our street budget. And this is due to, we, that's the difference between our overlay program, that when we overlay a street with asphalt, as opposed to just doing a seal coat, which is not the overlay. And so, that saved us, you know, $624,000. We bid that out like that. And I don't like that. That's not best practices, but that's kind of where we are. And so, anyway, that was that. On the other one, I'd note, we found $1,104,501 out of our vehicle replacement fund. And this is not good either. Over the years, we've worked really hard to build up a vehicle replacement fund where we save enough money and allocate enough money every year out of the departmental budgets to go into the replacement fund, to be able to purchase every year the vehicles every year, you know, that we plan for and have the money to do that without impacting the budget. Once we have enough savings, it just kind of perpetuates. Well, so, we allocate in everybody's budget according to the vehicles they need, X amount of dollars that go into that. Well, we completely cut that out for the year. So, what that means is that we're not, this year, replacing back into the general fund what we need for vehicles in the future by a million dollars. Now, we have a pretty nice fund balance in our vehicle replacement fund. But, you know, so, next year's budget, we either don't purchase any vehicles or you purchase on an emergency basis, but you're reducing that fund balance down. So, and I can already tell you that that also won't be in next year's budget as well. So, anyway, there's just some items in there. And I, again, I appreciate, everybody, this is kind of all hands on deck. And I appreciate the willingness of all of our people to pitch in and let's get this thing done. So, again, just to recap, you know, we have to reduce our expenditures down to the $63 million this year and by the end of September. And we monitor it every day to time it to where we'll end up like that. And hopefully, we won't need that many cuts by, end of September. And I think that's probably the worst case. So, I hope it is. Now, going forward, so, to get us to end of September, I feel real comfortable with what we've got here. And I think, obviously, that's doable. And so, I feel real comfortable where we are on that. Going forward, what's going to make this real challenging, you remember in our pie chart, 30, what, 3 or 4, 2 or 3% of the general fund revenue comes from property taxes. And I want to show you this because this is really going to impact us next year. You see the 2016, these are property values. And in 2016, our total property value was $5,584,618,839. Now, this is so important because the more property value growth we can get in our community, that shows the strength of the economy. People are building things. People are adding jobs. Our economy's growing. And so, you want that number to grow. That's, that's healthy. And you can see, over the last few years, we've not had a huge amount of growth with, even with all the building we've had going on. The overall growth has been pretty flat and not many ups and downs. This year, however, we got our preliminary, now, let me back up. The value in 2016, those values are certified by the appraisal district in July, July 25. So, we really won't know for sure exactly the impact on our property values until July 25. We do, however, have an estimate that has been sent out. And so, we don't know if this 2017 number is, in fact, exactly the way it'll be. But I think this would be, again, a worst-case scenario. Normally, and rightfully so, our appraisal district tries to send out as a conservative look, I think, you know, as they can to, to the entities to plan. But normally, the, the values are a little bit higher when we actually get the certified values than what the estimates are. But this year, I'm trying to paint the worst case. And so, if, in fact, we get to July and the certified values, this represents a 5% drop in our property values. And what that means with a 5% drop in that value, at our same tax rate, that's a million-dollar loss to the general fund for next year's budget. So, it's very significant on the property tax side. Now, on the sales tax side, as we project revenue for next year, you know, we can't, whatever it ends up this year, I can't, I can't project increases in next year. I've got to hold that flat, hoping that that is the bottom. And then, if the economy does start to recover, well, that'll be that much better. But, so, if, in fact, the property values remain at a 5% down, and of course, oil and gas values are down, I read at 50%. And we don't have a huge amount of oil and gas value in the city of Longview per se, but we do have some and it affects it. But that affects jobs and, anyway, the whole, the whole economy. So, I think that's an important thing to look at. Okay? So, this is really pretty simplified, but it kind of sums up what we're looking at. In 1516, you allowed us to use $1,825,917 of fund balance to meet our expenses. So, going forward, from, into next year's budget, I have to find $1,008 of cuts to offset that that I can't spend this next year. So, that, plus the cuts that we're cutting right now in 1516, I've got to keep that out of next year's budget. So, not only do I have to keep that out, I got to find another 1.825. And if, in fact, property values are down and we lose $1 million in property tax, then that's a total of $5.4 million that we either have to find some additional revenue or, or make cuts in our general fund. And then, on top of that, if we were to keep our budgets exactly flat, we know that I'm going to have at least $600,000 of more expenditure requirements than I did this year. And I've just, and I don't know exactly what that'll be, this is just a guesstimate. But I know another $400,000 to the budget for next year for a full year of operations for the animal shelter. Plus, there's a couple hundred thousand of some Plus, there's a couple hundred thousand of some built-in things in the budget on step increases in public safety that are part of that. So, so, I've got a, that's another 600,000 that you have to have a, a net reduction or fit that in the budget. So, I've really got to find more cuts somewhere else to fit that 600,000 in. So, if you look from October 1 of 2015 to October 1 of 2016, that's a net effective budget reduction in the general fund of about $6 million for next year's budget total. So, this, I think, shows the significance of that. And I don't have the 63 million, but, but for, for the purposes, 62% of the budget is fire and police that, for all practical purposes, are, are, I have, we have to leave that, are kind of off-base, okay? So, if I have to get $6 million out of the other, what, 38% of the general fund, well, that's, that is significant. And, you know, that's the, the whole park budget, or if you, really, or, well, you can, can see, I think if, in that case, if it's a, if, if we were to try to find $6 million out of that whole piece of pie, and that would be, I think, about a 9% cut. Well, that's a pretty good cut, even if, at the whole piece of pie. But if the cuts have to come from everything else, other than 62%, that's a, I think, a 24% cut in the general fund budget. And so, that's why I want people to see that, you know, cut five or six million dollars out of the city budget, out of the 160 million, that shouldn't be too hard. Well, I, I hope everybody sees that that's really not the issue. The issue is finding $6 million out of 38% of the general fund. So, anyway, like I said, I think that is a worst-case scenario. But I'll be real honest, if, if we have to find that kind of cut in that budget, you know, it, it could involve layoffs. It could involve a whole myriad of things and all the way up to reduction in services or, I don't have any, I don't have any proposals right now to, to come forward. But I can assure you, we're going to be busy trying to turn over every rock we can to look for some one-time revenues or other things where we, and hopefully, we'll see a little relief in the sales tax and not be down, find the bottom at least. And I'm really hoping that our property values, when they, they're certified in, in July, will not be, you know, even if they're a couple of percent down, that'll gain us another half million or more dollars in revenue. So, again, I don't want to be an alarmist. I don't want to, you know, I don't have any answers for you tonight where we're going, but I can tell you that we will bring you a balanced budget where the revenues and the expenses meet. And, but it will not be pleasant and it, it will not be best practices. I mean, you know, deferring maintenance, that's not, we all know that that's not good management, but that's where we are. And, or not buying vehicles and letting, you know, we've been in that shape before where you, you know, you have to buy, borrow money to buy $8 million worth of vehicles if you hadn't done it in the last four or five years. And, you know, I mean, but that, but I, but I think if we, I don't want to, I want to end up and say, if we can get through this next budget year, we have a tough time, but we're going to come out on the other end of it. We've got a good, strong economical base in Longview. We've got a lot of things going. And we're going to come out on the other end of this. You know, the, the big problem, it, can you go back to that sales tax one? I want to show you something that I think the bars, where it shows the...
No.
No, the sales tax. Did I have that in there? I did, didn't I? No, the bar, with the red bars, the... Yeah. This is pretty significant. If we, in fact, end up with 19,522, if you'll look in 2009, that's about what, what we collected in 2009. So, but the point I want to make here, do you see in 2010 what happened? Y'all remember, we had some severe budget cuts in 10. It went down that year to 18 million level. But the difference between now and then is, you see, the next, in a short time, it really rebounded. So, we, we were hoping that's what happened this time when we asked to use that fund balance. And we didn't get that bounce back like we did in, from 10 to 11. So, I think the fact that this thing has been, you know, over 14-month period has, has, what, has really hurt us as opposed to what happened, you know, in '09 and '10. We, we just bounced back a lot quicker. And hopefully, if we can get through this year, this next budget year, we're going to rebound and we're going to, but we just have to get through this time, just like businesses that we all know and people out there, we're no different. And so, anyway, be happy to take any questions, if you have any tonight.
Any questions, counsel?
Ms. Williams?
First of all, thank you for your presentation. We all know that it's a very challenging task you have ahead of you. We all have. Can you go back to the slide that shows the reductions that are proposed or that you're looking at, please? The one that lists them?
That had the different...
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. So, are most of those, those numbers to me look like maybe travel and a few office expenses? Is that what we're doing, or office expenses and travel? When I, when I look at beautification, fire, and as well, especially streets, why are those numbers so much larger? And I heard what you said about just the simple overlay, but have we, like, explored every option with that to try to at least, you know, even if we can do part of them the correct way versus just the overlay where they potentially, you know, have issues again? Because infrastructure is, is crucial. And that is a public safety and public service issue, all those that are listed. So, I just kind of want to know why those numbers were so large.
Well, of course, those are our largest budgets, number one. And the, you know, the, the street projects and the public work projects are very expensive projects.
Yes.
So, that's where you go first to try to find that, that many dollars. And the, and throughout these budgets, we did factor in fuel savings. We've had, we have some fuel savings that were pretty significant, and that's reflected in each of these budgets. We allocate that fuel in there. So, some of these cuts are savings as opposed to just straight-out cut. We get, you know, we budgeted X number of dollars per gallon for fuel. And what we, fuel, we, you know, it's kind of gone, so we got some budget savings and that's reflected. Also, some of these savings are in IT. We, you know, reduce our purchases in IT. And we allocate throughout all these budgets, much like we do vehicle replacements. So, those are reflected in there. The fire department, that 245, that, a lot of that is timing issue on, on employee hiring that we had some savings on, you know, between, when they actually get somebody on staff and when they've got a vacancy. And the, the apprentice program, where they've got people in school. So, that's kind of a timing savings on employees for a lot of that. And a lot of that's deferred maintenance.
Okay.
You know, there's some things we needed to do maintenance-wise at the fire stations and we, we deferred that to another time.
Police, too? Is that the same situation?
Police. And again, these are, these are some, of course, we don't have very many savings on vacancies right now, which is a good thing in there because it's, you know, we're, we're fully staffed. But these are, you know, things that we've all have sat down and gone line by line in each departmental budget. And these are just, I think, what I would call also just travel, making sure we, and we've cut most of the travel out unless somebody needs continuing education hours to keep a license or, or what. That's kind of where we're down to. We're, we're not going to TML. We're not going to city managers conference. We're, you know, I mean, we're trying to, to reduce everything that we, that we can. So, what, did you have another one?
No, that was just something that really stuck out to me because when we start speaking in terms of reductions, we have to be, and you did a really great job of explaining it. But we have to be crystal clear in, in making sure that people understand that we are trying to avoid reduction in services. Because as taxpayers, that's what we all expect from the city of Longview.
We're going to try to do that.
So, we have to be clear about that. So, thank you.
And, and to be honest about it, going forward into next year, you know, I think we're to the point where our street maintenance and things like that are going to be kind of on an emergency kind of basis on expenditures, you know, which, again, where, where we are is, is there's no good choices that, that we would all make, you know, to get there. But, and, and I hope it's not going to be this severe. I, I really do.
Me, too.
And, but to try to find five or six million dollars out of that piece of the pie is, is going to be challenging, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Riddler?
Last year, okay, when they gave you the preliminary property value numbers for, what, 2016, I guess, did they change that dramatically when they gave you the certified numbers?
Normally, it's, normally, and I think, and, you know, and I would do the same thing. They want to get out their, what their, they think it'd be in hope. And then, if it's better, that's, you know, because a lot of times, they just don't know because the people are still protesting the value. And, and so, they don't have everything completely set. So, they have to give us their, what, probably what they feel their worst-case is, too, just like we have to do with you all. So, normally speaking, both Harrison County and Gregg County, where we get appraisals from both, or normally, when, you know, from three to four points more than what comes in in the preliminary, normally. And so, if that holds true this next year, we could be even flat or 1% down or two. But I just am afraid to, at this point, go into the budget year planning on that and, and then at the last minute, have to find another million bucks somewhere, you know. So, normally speaking, it comes in higher than what the estimate is, yes. But, you know...
And that's what it did last year?
Yes, yeah.
It was up.
Yeah, we actually had, I think, a percent, 1.75% increase in the value from the year before, which, you know, is wonderful. That, you can leave the tax rate the same and, and, you know, get the benefit of increased production that way. And, you know, and I, I would be very surprised if it came in over last, you know, an increase. But I'm, I'm hoping for it. And, you know, but normally, to answer your question, it does come in more than...
One other thing, on the streets, are a lot of their expenditures in the summer when they can do the overlay work and the seal work and then it tapers off some. So, we're going to cut out a lot of that money right now. And then, in the fall, if we have more money, it's really going to be too late to, to recover that on the streets, I guess.
Yeah. Well, and, and remember, I've got to keep this 2.5 million of cuts out of next year's budget also. So, but yes, you're right. I mean, we, we, and, and we bid that project out, Roland, when? We've already, when did we bid our street seal coat out?
Seal coat, yeah. We've just, we've just bid out.
Yeah. So, we bid that out and, and in the process of doing the seal coat, so...
Two years?
Pardon?
Two years. So, that's two years, $600,000 out of the streets budget. What does that leave us left in the streets? I'm just curious. What does that leave us?
What's our total street budget?
Two and a half million left? Okay. Not after this year, but net, for the next fiscal year.
That's what we've been this year.
Okay.
Ms. Allen?
On the sales tax, Mr. Riddler, on the sales tax through seven months, approximately, how much are we down through the seven months compared to same period last fiscal year?
Was it a million nine or something like that?
It's a million forty-eight, eight percent, eight point five.
Little over a million dollars, eight, down 8%, so...
And you figured in maybe being down...
Sales tax. Well, we're, we, we projected to be down 5% each month till the end of the month as a worst-case scenario, which would, we'd end up at 2.2 million dollars down. So, that, that projection is the 19,522, that, that says that we're going to be 5% down each month for the next six months or five months.
But actually, through, through seven months in, we're down just about a million dollars. Is that what, Andy? Okay. All right. So, maybe we can be a little more optimistic that it won't drop another million in five months?
Oh, yeah. I hope, yes.
Okay.
And we, we saw this month, we saw it down only 2% when we had projected 5. So, yeah, if, if it would, it may be a lot better than that by the time we end up the year. But we've got to make sure we found the bottom, I guess, that, you know, in our projections, hopefully. So, yes, it could be a lot better, hopefully.
Mr. Moore?
I'm a big believer, too, in planning for the worst and, and hoping for the best. So, I applaud you and the staff for, for going through that exercise. If I understand correctly, we estimate worst-case that we're going to have to come up with 2,543 and change in cuts. And you've identified 2,996. So, you've got $450,000 in cuts that you've identified that even worst-case would, we may not need to make. So, given the timing of where we are in the fiscal year, as Ms. Williams talked about, we don't have any flexibility left in, if next month's sales tax is flat or even up 1%, can we go back and do change order for seal coat to maybe some, some overlay? I mean, how flexible are we on adjusting some of the cuts you've identified for the balance of the fiscal year?
Well, we're going to try, I think it's more of a timing issue to make it meet by the end of September. So, we have identified all those. And, and as we go forward, if, if we can kind of feel like we're only going to need 2 million, then we can make some, hopefully, make some adjustments. Now, going back and doing, it takes time to get these projects designed and bid out and things like that. So, I don't know, Roland, would have to, I don't know if it's too late to, but for the weather, probably is because you have to, like you say, get that down in the summertime. But again, you know, looking ahead for next year, we don't have any flexibility. We got to keep that amount, probably that amount and more out next year. So, yes, we can hopefully make it come out, we're trying to make it come out in, in the end of September where, where we need to be. And so, it's kind of, some of it's a timing issue as well. But it's probably too late in the year to redo it.
So, if, if things for the balance of the fiscal year, you know, let's be optimistic and it's not rosy, but better, we could indeed then take some of that 1.1 million that we've cut out of vehicle replacement and, and put back into vehicle replacement if, if things turn out better than what we expect they will be.
That's certainly an option for the council if you want to, yes. I mean, and, and let's go back to the fund balance of the slide. Yeah. You know, there's a possible, this is just projec, I just, this is projecting where I don't spend any more fund balance than y'all have allowed us to spend to get us through that year. But, you know, if, if things do turn around, instead of, you know, ending with 8,964, you know, we might end up with 9 million or 9 and a half, depending on kind of how these revenues and, and, you know, cuts do. So, you still have a very healthy fund balance. And that's why I want everybody to understand, we're not in dire straits financially. We are strong financially, we're just have some cash flow problems here the next year, year and a half, to get through till this thing turns around. But, you know, you always have the option to, to use that fund balance to mitigate things, or to do things that, that you feel like need to be done, that are appropriate. And you certainly have, have some room there, if, and it could be better. So, you remember last year, that's when we did the 1.4 million amendment? We ended up better than we had projected, which is, that's a good thing. So, there's, there's a lot that can happen between now and the end of the year. There's a lot of moving parts. And, again, you know, I don't want to, I hate to be doom and gloom, but I, I just want to...
Okay, then stop talking, Dave.
Make sure.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Yeah, thank you.
No other questions?
Okay, well, that was enlightening. Very nice presentation, Mr. Willard. Thank you very much for all the time you put in. And staff, all, I know y'all spent a lot of time doing this. And, and once again, this is, this is something that the cities go through. You tighten your belt, you, you cinch it up, and you know what? We'll all come through this together, because we're all in this together. And with David and the staff, and Angela, and all you all that are, that are preparing these budgets, I, I know that there will be tough times. But you know what? Tough times make you stronger, and then, and we will, we will, we will persevere. No one likes having to make cuts, but sometimes it's necessary in government to cinch it up. And we will do exactly what it takes to keep the citizens of Longview safe with services and protected in all, in all forms. So, thank you all, and I appreciate the presentation, David, very good job. Okay, what items of community interest? Mr. Moore?
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Ms. Snoddy? Oh, yes, you did, Ms. Snoddy.
I did?
Your billboards again. Say it again. Say it again.
Okay, well, I do have something. First, thank you, Chief. I would like to encourage all women to participate in the Women's Safety Course. It's an excellent program. I learned a lot. Just don't try and mess with me, guys, because I, I am prepared. Also, just as a reminder, with the marquees at your church, if you haven't already, I have seen a couple that have gone up, please just be mindful to put something positive regarding our city on your marquee. Let's all join in this and, and do this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy. Ms. Williams?
I have nothing.
Mr. Wright?
Last year, when I first came on the council, we talked, I introduced Dawson Penn after he won the state tournament as a freshman in tennis. Dawson's going back to the tournament this year, and we hope to have the same outcome, as well as we have a women's doubles team that going, or girls. And one of the girls on there is Dawson's sister, and I'm sorry, I don't know the other girl's name. But, so, good luck to all of them this year.
I believe it's Nick, the Little Nichols girl.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir. Well, we've had a beautiful spring. Unfortunately, the hay fever season is right in the middle of us. So, if my eyes are a little red, it's because hay fever season. Thank you.
Where does he come from?
I love, love you, Mr. Allen. Mr. Willard?
I've said enough, Mayor.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Okay, got a bunch of items of community interest. Okay, you know, voting's going on now, we have a city election taking place. Early voting dates, Monday, April 25th to Friday, April the 29th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturday, April 30th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And Monday and Tuesday, May 2nd and 3rd, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. All early voting will be Kentucky City Hall, 300 West Cotton Street. And, and just like what was said earlier by Mr. Hunter, citizen of Longview, it's your responsibility to vote. If you do not vote, you should not complain. I'm just gonna say that straight up. If you vote, you have all the attitude in the world to complain to any one of us you want to. But if you don't vote, you really have lost your ability to have credibility to come up here and complain to us. So, get out there and vote. We want you to vote, because we want you to come and give us input. So, please vote. Let's see a good turnout in this election. Journal election is Saturday, May the 7th, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Okay, ready, set, read. Sign-up begins May the 1st for the Longview's Library Summer Reading Club. Movies on the Plaza, Saturday, May the 7th. Free Family Funds starting at 7:30 at Heritage Plaza Downtown. Okay, a new thing, well, not new, it was kind of new to me. Last week, I mentioned to Sean that, you know, we have so many events going on in Longview. And, and some of them just seem to overlap. And I think, wow, because, you know, I get invited to a lot of them. You all do. And I can't make all of them, because there's a lot of overlap. So, I said, Sean, I had this brilliant idea. Let's come up with a community calendar. And he goes, yeah, we've got one. I go, okay, well, good, I didn't know that. So, here's what I'm gonna do. I, I want, I want us to be more mindful of that. And, and let's start putting our events on a community calendar, because we have a lot of nonprofits that hold charity events. And, and, you know, you realize, in your community, your, your charities come from the same circle. And when you divide that circle in the same night by multiple events, you decrease the amount that each circle is going to be able to participate in. So, I would love to see us have something where we all know the calendar's there, and we plan our events so that we don't overlap as much. It's great that we have so much going on, that we do have overlap. But it would be nice if we put it on a calendar that everyone had access to, and then we would know what's going on. Plus, it's good for the community to know what's going on, and we don't have so much overlap. I had a, I had a, another thing on that, didn't I, Sean? Oh, yeah, that's right there. Yeah, there you go, to see what's happening. Okay, so, let's talk about things that are going on. April 24th to 23rd, the Young Professionals League had a happy hour downtown. I was, I participated, it was very, very nice. Y'all can read this, Americans Bubble Guy, performance at Pine Tree ISD, Blue Dog Exhibit at the Museum of Fine Arts, downtown Longview. If y'all didn't go to downtown live last week, you missed it. It was, I guarantee there's more than 600 and something people there. It was phenomenal. Great band, Dag Nabbat was there, they had drinks, they had the food trucks there, the weather was beautiful. You know, this is a free event. It, it gives us that urban-type atmosphere in downtown Longview. And, you know, we should take advantage of it. Bring your kids, kids are running around, playing on scooters and having fun. It's a great place to fellowship and to meet your citizens, and your neighbors, and your friends, and your families. And it's a great thing to do. So, please, please participate in things like that. The Farmer's Market in downtown Longview's going on. Two hip chicks roadshow at the exhibit building. The Harvest Festival at Mon Cop. If you didn't go to the Harvest Festival Crawfish Boil, once again, you missed out. Let me just tell you this, I have been going for 21 years. It is one of my favorite events in Longview. It's, it's huge. They, they serve, I think they had 19,000 pounds of crawfish this year. 2,500 people or plus at the second seating, something close to that at the first seating. But here, here's what's more important. This is one of those things where participation reaps results. I was informed that, as of this year, the Harvest Festival group has given out over $1 million in scholarships to, to kids in our area. You know, that is a big, big number. And it comes from people participating in events like this. So, you know, get out there and enjoy Longview. It is a blast to get out there and mingle with your citizens. And it was, it's always great. Trinity School of Texas had their Spring Gala. Very, very great fundraising effort they had. Night at the Museum Murder Mystery. And see, that's the thing, the night at the museum was the same night as the crawfish festival. So, some got to go to one, some got to go to the other. I wish we could just make it where everybody could go to everything, if you want to go, because I would have loved to gone to both. But you have to make choices sometimes. So, this is why that, this calendar could be really, really inspiring. And it's gonna be my, my, I'm gonna take credit for it, if it works, just so you know. Dave Barry performing at the Eternal Belcher Center. Highway 80 had their Celebration of Life banquet last week. And if you didn't go to that, once again, you missed out. Ron Hall was there, he was the guest speaker. Ron Hall is, is the, the author of the book Some Same Kind of Different As Me. And that is as inspirational a story as I have heard in a long time. It's about a homeless man that was taken in by a family. And you just, you have to read the book. I, I was so impressed, it's, it's becoming, it's memated to a movie that will be out soon. But, once again, that's, it's a great event with, with, you know, we're bringing in really interesting speakers to Longview that come and, and enlighten us. And, you know, just a few weeks ago, we had Ron O'Leary at the, at the Belcher Center. Wait, wait, Bill, yeah. And he was talking about his book On Fire. And I read that book. And, and once again, if you want an inspirational story, go read that book, it's called On Fire. And, and these people are coming to our community to talk to us. So, you know, we need to embrace this. It's just, it's amazing. The Small Business Awards Luncheon is coming up. We have the Blue Dog Exhibit at the Museum downtown live, once again, next week, at this week, at Heritage Plaza. The Farmer's Market continues, KYKX's Big Bass Bonanza is coming up. Have y'all ever gone to that? Let me tell you, that is pretty impressive. Those guys get out there and they fish all day long, they're trying to catch the biggest fish, they make a lot of money off of it. But it's a fun place to be. A lot of people go out and, and cheer those guys on. The Cinco de Mayo Celebration is coming up at Mon Cop. Mudbugs and Music at the exhibit building. The Popovich Comedy Pet Theater at Eternal Belcher Center. All of these things are just things that we have going on. The Longview Chambers Business Solutions Conference, Workforce Center Texas Business Conference, downtown live again, Blue Dog, once again, Historic Market. Do you see what we have going on, gang? This thing goes on and on and on. But to do this, here's how this calendar's gotta work. You must, the, the event must be held in Longview or the immediate area. You'd have some interest that attracts to the public and visitors in Longview. Must be open to the public in general. That doesn't mean you can't sell tickets, but open to the public. And you must be, must not be solely for commercial business endeavor. This isn't to promote your own little business, this is to promote Longview. So, if we get a calendar where people participate, we're promoting Longview, we see what's going on, I'm telling you, it will make a difference. And I would love to see this take off so that we can really diversify and solidify what we have going on, so that we don't have so much overlap. I think it'd be really helpful to the community. Okay, scholarships. Let me tell you what's going on. It's amazing, I got a bunch, a bunch of applications for the scholarship, and I've read every one of them so far. We will be having the announcement of that at our May meeting, and we will have the winners come and read their essays at our, at our May meeting. You all are going to be very impressed. It's a shame every one of these kids could not get a scholarship, because it is, it is very, very impressive to see what's going on. Survey. Do you believe the homeless population in Longview has increased or decreased in the last five years? Survey says, the survey says increased by 79%. 21% said stay the same, decreased 1%. The actual is right there. We've gone from 219 in 2012 to up to 380 in 2016. Fairly significant jump from 2012. The biggest jump came from 13 to 14. From 14 to 16 is not that big of a jump, because these are, these are point-in-time surveys, and they're not 100% accurate. But they're, they're, they're close, because you have to catch people. If it's raining, you know, you're not gonna catch as many. But it is, it is interesting, interesting numbers that we are going to be looking at here in the near future here with this council, just so you all know that. So, this is a, this is a survey with a purpose, and I appreciate the people that participate in it, because the next question on that is, do you believe anything should be required of our homeless population to receive services from local organizations such as food shelter? And the answers are no, yes, if they're able to work, I would like to see them working or enrolled in a specific program in exchange for food, transportation, and/or shelter, or other. 69% said yes, if they're able to, we should have some requirements. 16% said other. And those others, I got a bunch of really interesting comments, and I've read every single one of them, and there's some amazing suggestions. Amazing, things that I have never thought about, never crossed my mind. But that's what a survey like this will do. It makes you open your eyes, and you see what other people are thinking, and you see what people have, that have so much more knowledge about this, or experience, or have seen something else work somewhere else. The other, even though it wasn't the biggest number, was the most important to me, because they actually wrote me notes, and I read them, and they're, they're very, very impressive, which we will, we will see this. You're going to see something I'm going to start putting up on my, on my Facebook page. It's gonna be, Longview, did you know? Because there are things that I think our citizens need to know about this community, because there are things that I don't know. Did you know that our homeless point-in-time survey results are this? Mental illness is 31% of our homeless population. I don't know if you think that's low or high. I, I truly thought that was lower than that. I thought it would be higher than that. Substance abuse, 46%. I figured that's about right, nearly 50%. Here's, here's the big one, veterans, 7.1%. I, I was told, it was reported that we had a huge homeless population of veterans. It's 7%. 1% is too much. But 7% is not what I was expecting from what I had read. So, these, these numbers are, they're, they're important. And I think we should be paying attention to these numbers. And I think we should, we should not just ask a question, we should act upon the answers. And we're going to do some action, ladies and gentlemen, because I think we, we owe that to our citizens, and we owe that to our, our populace. And so, these surveys did have a point this week, and hopefully, we will be seeing something come of that in the near future. One, one more item, on a sad note. I don't know how many of you all knew, but Mrs. Lear passed away. And Mrs. Lear, Mr. Lear's wife, Ms. Lear passed away a few years ago. Mrs. Lear passed away. And in the passing of, of this wonderful lady is the passing of a, of a wonderful family in Longview that has done so much for our community. They have been such patriarchs of our parks system and of our economy in general. They've done so much for Longview, and, and it's, it's sad. We, we grieve with the family. We, we thank you, family, for all that you've done for Longview, because these are pioneers in, in the philanthropy business in our community. And Mrs. Lear, at her, at her service, her granddaughters got up and gave wonderful testimonies about their grandmother. And one of them said that, that Mrs. Lear always would write them notes, and she would always sign her notes in a specific way. And it's dear to my heart. I understand how that works, because I had the same thing with my father, and I've tried